I'd like to call this meeting of the Cumberland School Committee to order at 7:23. I want to start off by apologizing that we started late. We had another meeting that ran over. Oh, I didn't even know you were here. I'm sorry, Mark. That's why I don't do this often. So first, I'd like you to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Next item is approval of the agenda. Pleasure of the committee. Mr. Demodica makes a motion, seconded by Mr. Salvatore. All those in favor? Aye. That passes seven, nothing. I also want to point out, the next item is election of school committee officers. So one of the reasons I'm starting this meeting off is, as the vice chair, I am actually the interim chair because we had some swapping of seats a couple of weeks ago. And where Mr. Hess and Mrs. Salvatore swapped seats and the town council appointed them, they were, in the meantime, they were sworn in, so they're actually on the school committee. But as a kind of, just to cross the Ts and dot all the Is, we're having another election for the school officer, sorry, the school committee officers. So the position in question is chair. And I'll open it up for nominations. Yes? Mr. Demodica makes a motion to appoint, well, to approve Ray Salvatore as chair. Seconded by Mr. Hess. All of us in favor? Aye. Against? Okay, so that passes five, two. So at this point, I'm going to hand the reins over to our chair.
Thank you, Mr. Denon. I appreciate it. I would like to say that I humbly thank my supporters up here on the school committee, and I would like to officially extend an olive branch to the members who did not vote for me to see if we can come to an agreement and work together and finish up the next six months that we're, that we're together before an election. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Denon. You did a fabulous job filling in. I appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Approval of minutes for the regular meeting for 2016-18. I apologize. I apologize. I wrote in notes over there. Next item on the agenda is the school committee appointments. I would like to appoint Steve Hess to fiscal subcommittee. Mr. Adams, I can't, I can't remember. Do I need a motion for that? No. It's just an appointment, correct? Okay. No problem. Okay. And then also, Mr. Hess to policy, correct? Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Excellent. Welcome aboard. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Approval of minutes for the regular meeting for 2016-2018. Approval of minutes for executive session for 12-2018. Executive session for 26-2018. The enrollment report for 5-1-2018. The school police report of 4-1-2018. And the residency-truancy report of 5-1-2018. Pleasure of the committee. Mr. Hess makes a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Denon. All in favor? Against? Eyes have it, seven, zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda. Report out of executive session meeting on 5:10-2018 this evening. There was no, no executive session votes. There was a vote to seal the minutes of the executive session. Pleasure of the committee. Mr. Denon makes a motion to seal the executive session. Seconded by Mr. Hess. All in favor? Against? Eyes have it, seven, zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda. The superintendent's report. Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Salvatore. Good evening, everybody. Would you please join me at the podium, Mr. Salvatore?
Yes.
Good evening again, everyone. And let me apologize again for making you all wait. I know that you all have busy schedules and it was a, you know, we had a lot of important things to talk about upstairs, so we apologize for making you all wait. But this is one of those special occasions where we have an opportunity to identify some of our students who have done something really impressive. Over the last several years, SEDEXO has conducted a competition, and it is actually called the, it is actually called the SEDEXO Futures Chefs Culinary Competition. And I think it's important that I mention all of the students who participated, and we have the three finalists, the three winners here with us this evening. So let me just identify all of the students who participated. And just for those of you who don't know how the competition works, students are encouraged to create a healthy meal. So there is competition at the school level. Then, the winners at the school level actually participate in a competition at the high school. I have been a judge in the past. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to do it in this most recent competition because I had to attend a conference at RIDE. But it is really difficult to decide the winners because they're all really good. All of the food is really good, and, most importantly, it's really healthy, too. So it's tasty and it's healthy, which is, I think, the most important point of all. So tasty food that is also healthy. So here are the students who participated, and I'll, I won't identify the three students who won the competition. So Eva Hoffman from BF Norton, a fourth grader. Alexis Parento, a fourth grader from BF Norton also. Clovis Bolregard from Community, a fifth grader. Milo Bolregard from Community, a third grader. Sage Bolregard, a fifth grader from Community. So now, it is my pleasure to introduce the three students whose, whose food was particularly tasty and wanted to be recognized by the judges. And I believe, Mr. Fiorillo, were you one of the judges? No, unfortunately not. Okay. So the, the person who came in third place in the competition was Ayla Dian from Ashton, a fifth grader. Ayla, come on up. Now, can you please talk about what you made, how you made it, how long it took you to make? I'm gonna tease it. The, the second-place winner, and they're all winners, by the way, but the second-place winner is, and I hope I pronounced the name correctly, is Nirenjana Vijay Kumar. Congratulations.
Excellent job.
Congratulations to you. Turn around here so we can take your picture. No, no, not that way. And last but not least, the first-place winner from Ashton Elementary School, a fifth-grader, Ethan Ribera. Ethan. Handsome guy. Good for you. Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. I was also a judge at the event as well, and it was, I was sitting next to Mr. Fiorillo, and I'll tell you what, I was deeply impressed on the quality of the food. It was a difficult decision, and I was full when I left there. Even, and I also went in the back, Shawna was there, and I looked at the operations. It's an excellent event that SEDEXO does put on. But I did want to mention the Riberos, correct? So they're extremely involved community within school and sports events, and they had a car wash last week, and you guys washed my car. Then I went back and got Kelly's car, and then you saw me again and washed the car. So congratulations to everyone. Thank you.
Congratulations again to all three of you. And having participated in, as a judge in the past, and eating some of those great food offerings, they're impressive. And again, I think it just goes to prove that not only can you have tasty food, but you can have healthy food at the same time. So congratulations to all of you. I have one more thing to mention. We have tried to get word out about this over the last couple of weeks. We have scheduled for, over the next couple of weeks, two screenings of this documentary called Screenagers. And this is, I believe, something that every parent should really attempt to see. It is being offered at both McCourt Middle School on the 15th of May and at the high school on May 21st. So I do believe, you know, we are hearing so much now about the impact that screen time is having on teenagers, not only teenagers, but all of us. We have many conversations about this all the time. But I do think it is, this is an opportunity for parents and students, for that matter, to really get to learn how much of an impact all this time that we're spending on our screens is having on us. And we, we also know that there is some research that shows that the amount of screen time that we are all spending on our devices is directly connected to a number of issues. I think, you know, some of the most concerning being anxiety and depression. So I certainly hope that parents will take advantage of this opportunity. It is being funded by all of our PTOs are contributing to the funding of this, of these two showings. And I do think it will be well worth parents' time to learn as a result of this documentary. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Excellent update. Next item on the agenda is chairperson's report. Nothing to report at this time in regards to the 2018 budget update. Next item on the agenda. Reports of standing committees. Payment of bills. Mr. Demodica.
Mr. Chairman, we did meet upstairs and went through the register, and on a two-to-zero vote, we approved the payment of bills in the amount of $1,142,496.33, and I would move the passage.
Thank you. Mr. Demodica makes a motion for the payment of bills in the amount of $1,142,496.33. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Fiorillo. All in favor? Against? The eyes have it, seven, zero. Thank you, Mr. Demodica.
Chairman, fiscal did meet upstairs tonight. Again, it was a lively meeting. We had a few items on the agenda. One is whether we'll extend the contract for SEDEXO. We had members from SEDEXO there. We had some questions answered. We looked at some contracts to extend. And more important, we have about seven resolutions to discuss tonight, and one of them has to do with the pool, and whether the school committee is going to approve the payment or the contract to replace the dextran unit in the roof. But more important, does the school committee want to be in the pool business? Because $400,000 could go towards other education items as well. So they'll come up for discussion in a little while. That's the report.
Thank you, Mr. Demodica. Next item on the agenda. Policy and procedure subcommittee update. Mr. Fiorillo.
Policy and procedures did not meet this past week. We will be starting up again with a full agenda in two weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorillo. Next item on the agenda. Achievement and communication subcommittee update. Mr. Denon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Achievement and communication subcommittee did meet on Tuesday, and we continued the discussion we started two weeks ago, where we were talking about, Mr. Demodica, the assistant superintendent, gave us a presentation two weeks ago about the two-year plan for elementary education curriculum and assessment and related topics. So this past week was middle school. It was a, it was a similar discussion, but it was very interesting. We covered a lot of topics, mostly due, like I said, with curriculum and assessments. Next meeting, which I'm not sure when it will be, because we have a town council meeting when, likely, the usual night, but the next meeting will be about high school plans, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Denon. Next item on the agenda. Comments from the public. Anyone would like to step up to the podium? State your name. Hearing none. We'll continue on. Next item on the agenda. Old business. Discussion and a vote to approve employee contracts.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Demodica.
They were in fiscal tonight. As you, we've tabled it in the past, but we have a motion from the fiscal finance subcommittee to approve the contract for, A, the director of special services to be in line with the other contracts for administrators. We approved the other a week, two weeks ago. And we have come to terms with the superintendent as well, so his contract is in the drive as well. We voted to approve that. We have tabled the assistant superintendent's contract till the next meeting. He's planning on coming in to speak to us. So I would move passage of the director of special services contract and C, the superintendent's contract.
Mr. Demodica is recommending passage of the director of special services and also the superintendent's contract. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Friedman. All in favor? Against? Eyes have it, seven, zero. That's what we're gonna do. Pleasure of the committee. We need a motion to table the assistant superintendent's contract. Mr. Hess makes a motion to table the assistant superintendent's contract. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Denon. All in favor? Against? Eyes have it, seven, zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda. Discussion and a vote to approve resolutions. SCR 2018-06, fiscal note on the ICSI Independent Cumberland School Committee contract.
Mr. Chairman, that is not ready yet. I moved to table that.
Mr. Demodica makes a motion to table the SCR 2018-06. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Fiorillo. All in favor? Against? The eyes have it, seven, zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda. New business. Discussion and a vote to approve the appointment of teaching and learning coach at Cumberland High School. Mr. Mitchell.
It's, it's, Mrs. Vogel, do you want to respond to that? I believe that there is an issue with the, with the title for this particular position.
So we need to just pass on this one, and I'll bring it back next time. It should actually be an assistant principal of teaching and learning at Cumberland High School. Teaching and learning coach is part of the bargaining unit, and that was, if you remember correctly, last time you approved a contract for the assistant, the assistant principal of teaching and learning, who is currently the teaching and learning coach, but we never appointed her. So I had asked Cindy to put it on, and I guess it was a miscommunication about what the title should be. So she really should be the assistant principal of teaching and learning at Cumberland High School. So we're just gonna pass it off the, the agenda today, if that's okay, and we'll bring it back with the correct title next time.
Thank you, Mrs. Vogel. So pleasure of the committee. A motion to table. Mr. Demodica makes a motion to table.
I have a second to motion to table.
Mr. Denon makes a, makes a second. All in favor? Against? The eyes have it, seven, zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda. Discussion and a vote to approve the SEDEXO maintenance contract extension.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Demodica.
This was discussed upstairs tonight. Previously, the school department went out to bid, and we got only one proposal back from current contractor SEDEXO to provide the oversight of the maintenance throughout our district. Mr. Picnano had subsequent negotiations with SEDEXO to bring the price down. His recommendation that we would do a three-year contract. We're having difficulties. SEDEXO said they've had difficulties hiring someone. If we only did a one-year contract to add a night supervisor to the, to the, to the positions here. It was heard up in fiscal tonight. We're sending it downstairs here with no recommendation because there was only two members for fiscal. And so it's whether we want to, you know, continue with the plan we have with SEDEXO or not. And that's the question here tonight. We, we have it. They've held their prices for three-plus years, and I think it's a good deal that we have them. Some will say we're better off with a director of facilities. We heard from a member of the union tonight, requesting that we do that. It's up to the board here in regards to what they want to do. I will start it off for discussion, and I will make a motion that we approve the contract extension with SEDEXO for three years. And I'll make that in form of a motion so we can have a formal discussion.
Mr. Demodica makes a motion to approve the SEDEXO maintenance contract extension for three years, correct, Mr. Demodica?
That's correct.
Correct. Mr. Denon makes a second for discussion. Mr. Denon.
I'd just like to give a follow-up on that.
Mr. Fiorillo.
As I have in the past, I'm going to be voting no against the extension of the contract. And I just want to make it very clear that it is no reflection of the work that is being done by the two gentlemen sitting over there. I think they're exemplary in their work ethic. I just believe that we would, the district would be better served having a facilities director that answered directly to the superintendent. And I also believe that would be, there would be more oversight of the money spent on our facilities. So I will be voting no for it. That's all.
Mr. Fiorillo? Anyone else? Mr. Demodica.
I would have to kind of disagree. I think SEDEXO has done a great job of what we've done, accomplished in the last six years since they've been here that I'm aware of. Yeah, we've had some issues with the union not wanting to respect the, the people from SEDEXO in regards to oversight. But they do report to the superintendent. There is someone reporting. And the fact is that the school committee, you know, has six positions open for maintenance that we haven't filled in a while, and that takes a toll when you're trying to get the work done. Their, their profit is modest. It's a 2% profit. And we use their knowledge and ability to, to get projects done. If we need to call in a consultant, they're calling in the consultant to get it done. We may not like the grass getting cut, the snow plowing being done correctly, but, you know, we're buying equipment to get that stuff done. We're six people short, which they're gonna start interviewing next week for. And we have work that's gonna happen this summer. And if we decide we're not gonna do a contract with these guys, you know, we only have to do, we, I think it's only a 30-day notice in each direction that, you know, see you later, goodbye. And they've done the job. They've done the job well for what we've given them for tools. And I would move that we extend the contract, do the new contract. We went out to bid on it. We only had one company out of the whole state that came back and said, yeah, you know, we'll do it. And, you know, the gentleman, the Will, he's out cleaning floors himself, he's walking through buildings in the middle of the winter to make sure we're not freezing pipes. And Jason, Jason, right? I mean, he lives in town. He, he has a direct knowledge of what our buildings need. Will has a license for the asbestos. Are we gonna find someone for the asbestos? You know, we've, we recommend, talked about it, I was told, at the Rhode Island Association of School Committees about what we're doing here. And we're almost asbestos-free for a district, you know, for others. And I really think that we're doing the right thing by approving another contract with these guys.
Thank you, Mr. Demodica. Any further discussion? I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor? Against? Motion passes six to one. Thank you.
That's, that was for a three-year contract.
For a three-year contract. Thank you, Mr. Demodica. Next item on the agenda. Discussion and a vote to approve the CYSA field use agreement. I would recommend to the committee that we table this vote until we can get together for further discussion. Pleasure of the committee. Mr. Hess makes a motion to table. Do I have a second?
Second for discussion.
Mr. Denon, second for discussion.
Mr. Campagnelli is here. And I don't, I don't want to put you on the spot, but he asked me if he should come tonight, and I thought that his input would be valued and important. So I, I made a second for discussion, but I, so I think if we have any questions, I, one of the issues is, was it just two weeks ago that they were here, or was it four weeks ago? They, CYSA had given us a written proposal, and we had discussion here at, at a meeting, and they said they were gonna come back and make some changes to the proposal. I don't think we've seen any update to that proposal. Can you talk about that? I know you, I know you work with them all the time, too. Yeah.
Just real quickly, the, the proposal, really, they haven't, I think they're kind of in a status quo mode. You know, we're working well together. They're communicating, asking for permission versus, you know, asking for forgiveness, which is great for me. You know, hey, you know, I know it's eight to 12. It's blocked off for practice, but we've got on 11:30. If no one's there, and, you know, usually, we can make those accommodations adjust by a half hour. It's getting dark, you know, a little earlier than we thought, you know. So we've been working well. They've made some simple reparations, filled in some divots, you know, and always ask permission. So communicatively, they've been real good. And I know they're continuing to work with the Colts, or the junior clippers. But also now, the, I'm sure you've read the literature about fields in town and committees forming, so we have a meeting even next week. So I think a lot's gonna get hashed out about fields and maintenance programs and townwide. So it'd be smart to, you know, table and kind of let, see where that dust settles, see what there was. We heard from an agronomist, and I learned all about grass and pH and everything else, which was very interesting for my own lawn, but we still have, you know, a lot to do here. So I think with the town and what they're buying in equipment, I know we've bought a piece of equipment that already texted Will and said, hey, I want to get a joyride on that and see what we can do to help these fields. And I think that, things are moving, I think, townwide, and it might be something where it all, kind of all the pieces fall into place, where we have a, an active plan where we're working in conjunction with the town to rest fields, to aerate, to overseed, to collaborate. And, and making any decisions now on future agreements might be a little bit hasty because we might be able to benefit from more, a cheaper, more collaborative effort from both the school department, the town workers, and what all the groups are gonna kind of pull together versus, you know, we'll take over this field, and we'll take over that field, and it's mine. So I think that would be the, you know, at this point, just to kind of sit tight, and let's see where things kind of fall with, with the overall big plan that they're supposed to be coming out with.
Thank you, Mr. Campagnelli. Any further discussion? So I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor? Against? Eyes have it, seven, zero, to table the approval of the CYSA field use agreement. Next item on the agenda. Discussion and a vote to approve the changing of the school committee regular meeting start time to 7:30. This, this change, and myself and Mr. Denon have spoke, spoken, and I believe we've also reached out to other members of the committee, feeling that building in that 30 extra minutes for this meeting to start 30 minutes later will help to give us some more time for some of our previous meetings, executive and fiscal and policy or achievement, whatever, if night falls on, some time, so we're not rushing so much. Pleasure of the committee?
Your turn.
Mr. Denon makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Demodica.
The state will be notified in regards to update their, their list to the Secretary of State.
Yes, Mr. Demodica. Thank you. All in favor? Against? The eyes have it, seven, zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda. Discussion and a vote to approve resolutions. Mr. Demodica.
Right, Mr. Chairman. Just bear with me here.
Mr. Demodica, you only have Mr. Demodica, you only have six, you've done more.
All right, so the first item on the agenda is SCPR 5-2018-03. It's a resolution authorizing and empowering the school committee to purchase a van from Mobility Works of New London, New Hampshire. It's a special handicapped accessible van with a lift. It's an amount not to exceed $49,752.75. It helps our special ed department moving children around with wheelchairs and especially during the day when they, when we have children in the transitional program going to work studies. Right now, we're renting a bus from Durham, and I think this is a more acceptable use because we can use it throughout the district if necessary. It was not budgeted in this year's budget. What we've done is we're, we are having, we are running ahead this time in our budget, and we plan to use money from savings that we expect they're gonna happen between healthcare and pension contributions. If it does pass upstairs, and a two to zero vote, and I would move passage.
Thank you, Mr. Demodica, Mr. Demodica is making a motion to pass SCPR 5-2018-03, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Hess and Mr. Fiorillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Eyes have it seven zero, thank you, Mr. Demodica.
All right, next is SCPR 5-2018-14. Resolution empowering the school committee to award to ENE Systems of Canton, Mass. For the replacement of the Dextron unit, which is the unit on the top of the pool wing. The amount not to exceed $407,923. This um, is, will come from the budget savings in the district for this fiscal year. This was part of our lively discussion upstairs whether $407,000 could be better used in the district elsewhere or have the town pay for it, or do we remain in the pool business? So I'll give you the, what happened upstairs, and then we'll open it up for discussion. So it did pass upstairs under two to zero vote, so I would move passage. And then we can do the discussion.
Mr. Demodica is recommending, is making a motion for passage of SCPR 5-2018-14. Do I have a second?
Yeah, just before, I just want to say that this does not include doing showers, painting, or any other work in that area that needs to be updated. The business office did not bring that to us yet because there's no sense doing that unless we did this.
Only the content listed within the document of SCPR, thank you, Mr. Demodica, do I have a second? Mr. Fiorillo, seconds for discussion, Mr. Fiorillo.
I support this, we've been talking about replacing Dextron units since I first came on this committee in 2012. We have an opportunity to get a very, to get a brand-new unit at a discounted price because it was used as a, as a display model at a local, at a, at a regional refrigeration show, trade show. By not passing this, we are essentially shutting down the pool. I know some won't see it that way, but I don't see how we move forward without this unit. So, uh, and I believe that once we get this done, and we move on some of the other projects for the pool, the pool will be able to make a good amount of money, plus it is a source, I believe, of local pride. And I do not believe the town council or the mayor's office will ever invest in this pool. And if they did, it would not be for another year or two down the road.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorillo, Mr. Prignano, could you please come up to the podium? I have a few questions. Mr. Prignano, have you spoken to the town, the mayor's office directly in regards to the pool?
Yes, we spoke today, and um, we keep saying $400,000 because that's what we're gonna spend now. But I think it's important to add to the conversation, or at least to the record, that Representative McLaughlin has been working with, with the Rhode Island Department of Education to get their approval to add this project for Cumberland, and that they'll be somewhere between a 45 and 50% reimbursement on it. So that $400,000 will be more like $200,000 when it's all said and done. So I think that's important to realize.
Mr. Prignano, the reimbursement is going-
Also, I'm speaking to the mayor, usually when we issue a lease of some sort and the town pays the debt service, whether it be a bond for, you know, like the 2010 project or that type of stuff, the town pays the debt service, so when there's a reimbursement on the, on the school construction aid, it should really go to the town because they're paying, they're paying the debt service. In this case, we're, we're gonna take this money out of our budget. We've talked with the mayor and the finance director today, and they, they agree that that money should come back to the school department, that the town isn't paying, isn't, you know, didn't borrow this money or come up with this money. It's coming out of the school budget, out of savings we have this year. And so that money would come back to us probably next year.
Mr. Prignano, could we get a, an email or a letter or something back from the mayor's office in relation to the communication that you and Mr. Mitchell?
I can, I can tell you the um-
Mr. Palmerly, correct?
Right, I can tell you that the mayor did pass on to, to Bob and I today over the phone that if the school committee approved the project, he supports the project also.
Mr. Chairman-
Hold on, Mr. Prignano, Mr. Demodica.
We're having a joint meeting on Monday night with the town finance subcommittee. And I believe Mr. Palmerly is gonna be there as well. And I will bring that up, that we would like some written assurances that we are getting the reimbursement from the state going directly back to the school.
Mr. Demodica.
Imagine it'll be, there'll be someone, you know, a clerk there or whatever, so it'll be in the record too. And that's the whole discussion, the whole purpose of that meeting, Monday night is to talk about capital improvements at the school department, potential bond issues and stuff. So I, I think the pool is something that fits into that type of discussion.
The situation that we're up against is that we're looking for passage tonight on this.
Well, like Mr. Demodica mentioned, there is a, at a significant reduction. Dextron units are usually much more, I think the price that we can buy this Dextron unit is for, is for $85,000.
When would this work commence, Mr. Prignano?
It would commence as soon as we purchase the unit. Remember, we'd like to do as much work as we possibly could in this year's budget. This is an expense of this year, it's not next year's budget, so you kind of have that going against you too. We could designate money, I think I had a discussion with Mr. Denon about that the other night. We could designate money, but the more work that we could do and not designate a big piece in our, in fund balance, I think would be best.
I apologize, I did not ask this question upstairs, how long will the work take to be done?
Well, if we don't buy the used unit, you won't, you won't even see a unit for 16 weeks.
The unit that we're purchasing is used?
It's available, it's not used, it was, it was just demoed at a trade show. It'll come with full warranties that we would get if we bought one that isn't even built yet.
How long will the work take, once they get, bring the unit here, how long?
I'm not exactly sure how long it'll take, but it's not, it, you know, I, I would think it, it would go into the, into July.
Any further questions? Mr. Denon.
I misunderstood, Mr. Prignano, how much is the unit, and how much are we saving by buying it?
Well, Dextron units are much more than the $85,000, we haven't pre, we haven't gotten a bid on one and stuff like that. But we did get a quote of $85,000 in ENE's proposal for that used unit, not used, but that dump, that trade show unit.
We don't know what the price differential is between a non-trade show unit versus a-
No, but we've, we've always, we've always estimated, you know, to replace a Dextron unit, just the Dextron unit alone was always gonna be 200-plus thousand dollars, so.
Plus against 85.
Right.
That, that's a significant savings.
Well, there's some labor in that too, and I don't want to make you think that the unit itself is just 200,000.
Okay, well, what about bids? Is this a, are they on a state bid list, is that why we're-
Well, ENE is on the state bid list, so using them as a general contractor, and they'll go out and hire the staging company and the rest of that type of stuff like a general contractor would do.
You know, in, in my mind, I think, and I said this upstairs, but I think this, this really should be a town-wide conversation. I, I'm, I'm for it, I personally, I, I think the town should be behind this. But it, but it seems odd that the town, the mayor, I, I forget what was said, but he would approve it if, if we approve it. That just seems like an odd, maybe was misstated, but um, does he approve it or not regardless of what we want to do?
Well, I think he does, but I think, you know, I mean, he's not, he has, he's not, he doesn't oppose the project, as, you know. And if the school committee wants to go forward, he would be supportive.
Mr. Demodica.
About four years ago, this school, not this school committee, but we voted to repair the cement deck and we drained the pool and fixed the tiles that were leaking. We were going through 20, 30,000 gallons of water constantly. And at that point in time, the public came out and made, they wanted us to fix the pool. I mean, you know, this should be a, it's a bigger issue, it's just a town building that the school department should be directing money towards educational items and not just fixing buildings all the time, you know, this is getting ludicrous. But the building's old, it's getting old, and it has to get fixed, otherwise you gotta shut it down. You know, we've had children that have gotten scholarships out of it, we've read them in the Valley Breeze. It's a big nut to, to just say, yeah, let's just go spend $400,000. But we're gonna get that kind of reimbursement, it's really a couple hundred thousand, and it's fixed. It's fixed for, you know, maybe the next 30 years, other than the electrician said, you know, the filter's original. But it is working, we replaced parts and as necessary, we replaced motors. The Sedesco replaced the motors recently. You know, we've been putting money in for years and-
We just bought the new um-
The mayor's gonna-
Filters in the, in the, in the unit.
The mayor, and, you know, and again, we have the joint meeting on Monday night with the town council, with the fis, their fiscal. It'll be brought up then about Mr. Palmerly and the mayor saying they will give us the money back. Just like they said they were gonna give us the $300,000 on the electric, you know, on the solar. And, you know, the fiscal keeps on prodding them, when we're gonna get the $300,000 because we included that in our budget. So we have to verbally, you know, make it known, this is what you agreed to. So any town council going forward can keep his feet to the fire and say, give him the money.
If I could just, you know, obviously I don't have any children in this district that, at this, this stage of my life. But just recently, a few years ago, for five or six girls that wanted to play hockey, we, we put out 40 or 50,000 dollars, caught up a hockey program, we fund that each year. We're probably well over $200,000 in hockey costs because it's an ongoing expense each year to have that program. This is a one-time expense, and I'm sure way more than five or six kids use the pool. You know, I think, I think it makes your high school, our high school, you know, different than, different than other schools in the district.
I know, I'm, I'm one of, I use the pool with my youngest daughter now, but I have used the pool many a times over the years with all of my children, so. Mr. Denon.
I actually forgot what I was gonna say, but I, I appreciate what you, what you say, that it, it's unique to Cumberland, somewhat unique in Rhode Island, and sets us apart. I think the, the big thing for me is it's not a $400,000 expense, it's half that. And we, we include the reimbursement. I know that we already have a motion and a second, but I, I want to say that we should, I don't know if we can change this, but if we don't get assurances from the town that we're gonna get the reimbursement money, I wouldn't want to go forward. So can we put a contingency on this?
Mr. Adams, please advise. So we have a motion in a second to approve.
Mr. Denon's saying is they would approve it with the, with the add, with the contingency or the, the additional that the town would, when they receive the reimbursement, turn it over to the school department.
Yeah, just if the, if the alternate scenario worked out, we approve it tonight, and on Monday, they say, no, we, we're not gonna give you the reimbursement. That's a different story, right?
Chairman, I, I'll withdraw my motion because I agree 100% because we do have an item on the docket, you know, coming next year for curriculum that we, you know, we know we're gonna spend a couple hundred thousand dollars for the new elementary curriculum. And this money can go right to that, so I will withdraw my motion and redo it again, so, if that's okay.
Mr. Demodica is going to withdraw his motion.
Do a new motion to, you know, to approve this, subject to getting a letter from the mayor's office or the finance director that the reimbursement from the state will come back to the school district. And I'll work on that tomorrow.
I, I'll second that, and I, for discussion, to keep the discussion going. I, I want to make a comment to say that I, I trust them, I, I, they told you that we would get the reimbursement. To me, it makes sense we would get the reimbursement, but I think in the interest of either spending 200,000 or 400,000, I think it's important that we get that reassurance in writing.
So I just, I'm just confused, is your motion now to approve it on the contingency that they, of the letter?
Either a letter or a verbal confirmation from Mr. Palmerly on Monday night.
Okay, I just want to point out that um, I was, I'm from a town in Connecticut that had three swimming pools, town swimming pools. And after the big factory left town and basically bankrupted the town, one of the first things they did was immediately closed all their pools. And I'm in touch with people from the town now still. And it is one of the biggest regrets in that town, that they no longer have a swimming pool for the kids. We have something that very few people have, and I believe that the pool, if managed properly, which has not been the case since we've been on this committee, could generate money for the upkeep of that pool into the future.
The other thing with, with state aid following a child, I, I don't know how many children, you know, attend school here because they do want to swim and would go maybe somewhere else that has a pool, you know, be more of a private school type of thing, because I don't think there are many public schools with it, you know, and you would, you potentially lose that state aid too. There are people that, you know, I think someone mentioned that get scholarships that go here that, you know, for college, for swimming and that type of stuff. I, I, I think it's really a, I mean, I hate spending the money, but I think it's a real diamond that you have.
Mr. Fiorillo.
And quite honestly, I mean, really, I, I don't think the town would ever find $400,000 to commit. And we also know that it's really not gonna be 400,000. More likely, it's gonna be less than that, we always try to cap it. And I have to say that ENE has been very good with their, with their estimates of projects. They always come in, I say always, a majority of the time they do come in under their numbers. They're very conservative like that, so.
Mr. Denon.
I appreciate, I appreciate what you said, Mr. Fiorillo, about the town could not find $400,000. Actually, I was considering that maybe we split the cost with the town, so it wouldn't be 100%. I think that we should also commit, and I don't know when we have this discussion, if we're gonna do this, we need to do other improvements to the pool. We need to make it a, a place that people want to go to, because they're not gonna go if, if the locker rooms are not functional and the showers are in disrepair. So I, I think we need to commit to that, we need to have that discussion first, but we need to commit to that too.
Yeah, and I think, um, I think what Mr. Prignano said earlier in fiscal is correct. We are holding off on the other improvements because without this improvement, we don't have a pool. And I have met with a member of the public, I don't want to mention his name here. But they, there is a group of people in this town ready to start fundraising as soon as the pools, you know, we're committed to open, keeping the pool open, getting the signage for um, Mr., I'm sorry. Cal, for Cal, yeah, thank you, Cal. And they plan on doing fundraising outside of, you know, the plaques and the signage, but they want to start, I think, beautifying the area. So these are a lot of people that have swum here, swum here in the past and have a lot of pride in the swimming pool area.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorillo, Mr. Demodica.
Our clerk pointed out that, you know, our resolution, you know, calls for the 407-923, but doesn't talk about getting the letter from the finance director or the mayor. So we need to add on to the end of the first paragraph of the resolution stating that the, is subject to getting verbal, written approval from the mayor or the finance director for the reimbursement to come back to the school district. So I would make that in the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Demodica. Thank you, we have a second from Mr. Fiorillo, so Mr. Mitchell? Yes, okay, I'm just thinking. So we have a motion to modify the SCPR 5-2018-14. The original resolution will be modified to say-
First paragraph at the very end, subject to receiving written or verbal approval from the mayor or the town finance director that the state re- that the state reimbursement will come back to the Cumberland School District.
Mr. Demodica. Mr. Fiorillo made a second to that content. Any further discussion? All in favor? Against? Mr. Hess votes opposed. The motion, the amended SCPR 5 2018 dash fourteen passes six to one. Okay, I apologize, I apologize. That was incorrect. We amended it. Now, Mr. Demodica makes a motion for the amended. Thank you. I have a second. Second by Mr. Fiorillo. Any further discussion? All in favor? Against? Mr. Hess votes opposed. Motion passes six to one. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, SCPR 5 2018 slash dash fifteen, purchase of Chromebooks for a high school. Mr. Demodica.
Chairman, the resolution often empowering Cumberland School Committee execute a contract with Hub Technical to purchase four hundred and eighty-six Chromebooks for the high school in an amount not to exceed a hundred thirty-two thousand nine hundred dollars. The funds from this is coming from the expect, expected budget savings for this fiscal year. It passed upstairs, and a two to zero vote, and I would move passage.
Mr. Demodica is making a motion for passage of SCPR 5 dash 2018 dash fifteen. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Hess. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? The eyes have it, seven to zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, SCPR 5 2018 dash sixteen, purchase Chromebooks in carts for elementary schools. Mr. Demodica.
The chair, resolution authorizing and empowering the school committee to execute a purchase contract from Hub Technical for up to one hundred and thirty Chromebooks and five elementary school Chromebook carts in an amount not to exceed thirty-eight thousand seven hundred forty-five dollars. This is in the technology budget for this year. It passed upstairs, two to zero, and I would move passage.
Mr. Demodica is recommending passage of SCPR 5 2018 dash sixteen. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Dennan. My, I do have a question on this, Mr. Demodica. How many carts was it again?
Five.
One, five carts, okay. Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? The eyes have it, seven to zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda was SCPR five dash five dash 2018 dash seventeen, purchase of Pro Desk four hundred PCs for district-wide. Mr. Demodica.
The chair, it's a resolution empowering the school committee execute a contract with Hub Technical to purchase up to one hundred and three CTO Pro four hundred PCs district-wide in an amount not to exceed sixty-one thousand one hundred twenty-six dollars, thirty-eight cents. This is funded in the technology budget for this year. It's on the plan that Mr. Chandler has to replace and update PCs. These PCs are going to secretaries and to middle school as well. So I would move passage. It passed upstairs, two to zero.
Mr. Demodica is making a motion for passage of the SC dash PR dash five dash 2018 dash seventeen. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Hess. All in favor? Against? The eyes have it, seven to zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the SCPR 5 dash 2018 dash eighteen, purchase of the laptop computers for administrators. Mr. Demodica.
The chair, resolution authorizing the school committee to purchase from Hub Technical up to twenty laptops for the administrators, not to exceed twenty-three thousand eight hundred sixty-nine dollars and eighty cents. It is a budget item in this year's technology budget. This is to update the laptops that the administrators have, which are six years old, parts and so forth. So this will replace them as well. That's part of Mr. Chandler's master plan to, you know, keep computers updated and so forth. Passed upstairs. I'd move passage, two to zero vote. Move passage.
Mr. Demodica. Mr. Demodica is making a motion for the passage of SCPR 5 dash 2018 dash eighteen. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Hess. All in favor? Against? Eyes have it, seven to zero. Thank you. Committee, next item on the agenda, personnel recommendations. Mrs. Vogel. Hello?
So I have two personnel recommendations, I'm sorry, for you this evening. I have a retirement and a leave of absence. So I request the advising consent of the school committee on the retirement of Paul Knoyer, world language teacher at Joseph Elmacourt Middle School, effective June thirtieth, twenty eighteen, after eleven years of service. And I request the advising consent of the school committee on the FMLA leave of Jessica Rock, art teacher at Cumberland High School with an anticipated date of May twenty-ninth, twenty eighteen, through the end of the seventeen eighteen school year.
Thank you, Mrs. Vogel. You have two recommendations. Mr. Fiorillo.
Yes.
How many years?
Eleven.
Pleasure of the committee. Mr. Dennan makes a motion to accept the two personnel recommendations. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Fiorillo and Mr. Demodica. All in favor? Against? The motion passes, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Vogel. Next item on the agenda, school committee comments, school liaison reports. Anyone? Mr. Fiorillo?
I had a chance to meet Mr. Knoyer because he's actually my daughter's French teacher. And I was very impressed by the way he approaches the subject, his passion for teaching language to kids, and I think he'll be missed. I think he's an excellent teacher, and it'll be sad to see him go.
I agree with you, Mr. Fiorillo. Nice words you said. Anyone else on the committee? Mr. Dennan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Earlier this week, I went, actually, it was just last night, I went to the Cumberland School Volunteers reception, which honors all of the, the community members and parents who volunteered in our schools. And Mr. Mitchell was there and gave a speech and had a lot of nice things to say about the volunteers, which I, I agree wholeheartedly with everything he said. We have a lot of volunteers in our schools, and they help our children immensely. And the organization that Mrs. Sukatos runs now is, is a great organization that I'm happy to support too. It was a fun night as well, where they honored some volunteers who have put a heck of a lot of hours into our schools. So that was nice to, to see. And also, it's Teacher Appreciation Week, and so not just volunteers, but we have a lot of great teachers. Our teachers are the lifeblood of our schools, and we appreciate them. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you, Mr. Dennan. Anyone else? All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Mitchell, do we have executive session?
We do not, Mr. Chairman.
Next item on the agenda is to adjourn. Pleasure of the committee. Mr. Hess makes a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Demodica. All in favor? Against? The eyes have it, seven to zero. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.